Great morning, everyone, and thank you for being here for our Board of Commissioners meeting this August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. I'm grateful that we have Reverend Courtney Jones with us today of Pilgrimage United Church of Christ. She will be providing our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge provided by Deputy Floyd of the Sheriff's Office. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Please will you pray with me? Holy One, we are so grateful for the ability to gather this morning on this gorgeous day to be a people about the work of serving your people. We pray for those who are leading us. We give you thanks for leaders who lead with courage and wisdom and compassion, and we pray that your spirit will be on them today as they lead us. We pray for the wisdom of the people that they serve who have come to share their concerns and their thoughts. We pray that your spirit of equanimity will be present as we make decisions together about our common future. We pray all of these things in the name of love. Amen.
If you would, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is now officially called to order. We have one presentation before us, and it's to recognize our information services for their recent recognition. So all of you here with that department, please join me up front. Thank you. Anybody can come back.
Kimberly.
All right. year as an entire team, as they received national recognition from the National Association of Counties for the Digital County Survey this two thousand twenty-two, and it honors counties with innovative use of emerging technologies, enhanced cybersecurity, and strengthened digital equity initiatives. The Digital County Survey is one of the most powerful market surveys and benchmarking tools for state, city, and county government leaders. This survey assesses how our nation's jurisdictions are applying technology to better serve their constituents. There are a whopping three thousand and six counties nationwide, and there are ninety-four counties in the United States with a population between five hundred thousand and nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine citizens. Cobb is within that bracket, and in just one year of participating in this survey, Cobb moved from being the tenth county within that number to taking fourth place. And this amazing feat occurred while facing new challenges that we have every day. We are still in the throes of coming out of this pandemic and life changing and technology changing in how we use it in the workplace and in the community. And our county was recognized for being in that five hundred to nine hundred ninety-nine thousand bracket for their improvements in cybersecurity and their new methods of managing technology assets in a hybrid work model. And also implementation, many of you know, we are doing that two-factor authentication system when we log into our computers from home. We also have a new data center and various online applications. So they really have been doing a lot of work to help us continue working during this time. And I want to commend all of you for all that you've done. A lot of times, we don't see you, and that's not a bad thing, because we know things are working and you're working when we don't see you. But I know every time that I've called or reached out to someone, you've always been extremely helpful, and that's just personally, but on a broader scale, you've been doing a wonderful job for all of our employees and our citizens. And I personally want to say thank you, and thank you for making Cobb look so good on the national spotlight. You're welcome. We can, yes, there you go. Kimberly, I don't know if you'd like to share a few words?
Yes, thank you Chairwoman Cupid, Board of Commissioners, Dr. Mae Morris, and Sharon Stanley for your support of us and recognition of our achievements. Thank you to this wonderful team, and congratulations on all of your accomplishments this year. We have, it never ends, so our work never ends. We've always got a lot going on, but you all handle it so wonderfully with under pressure and time limits, so thank you for all that you do. Also, I want to thank the county departments and elected offices, because pretty much almost all projects that were submitted as part of this nomination were done in conjunction with other county departments. And so I want to thank you for your partnership and the trust that you've put in us to help you do your job better and accomplish your goals. So, thank you.
Yes, we'll line up for picture. Where's Hayward? Where's Hayward, the guy? My other buddy. He's handling it. He's holding down the floor. of Transportation. Drew, if you're here, please join us up front.
Our public hearing this morning is in accordance with state law, the board is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of one hundred thousand dollars or more to employ an independent consultant or consulting firm, or to conduct an independent study or survey. In order to begin, the following projects, we would like to open the public hearing. Those projects are part of the two thousand twenty-two SPOS program, and that includes the Holly Springs corridor improvements, Church Road plant, Atkinson Road at North Church Lane, intersection improvement, Shalford Road at Gordy Parkway West, intersection improvement, Canton Road corridor improvements, Riverside Parkway at White Road, intersection improvement, South Gordon Road at Piska Road, intersection improvement, Barnes Mill Road sidewalk, Peach Hall Road sidewalk, and Bill Murdock Road at Pine Road realignment. Now therefore, the department requests the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending one hundred thousand dollars or more for engineering design services for various projects identified in the two thousand twenty-two SPOS transportation improvements program.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone who's here can address the specific matters on this agenda item for a total of three minutes.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners. Christine Rosman, Marietta. I do have a question, because a lot of times this comes up and it says a hundred thousand dollars or more, but we don't know if that means a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, or if it means five hundred thousand. So in this particular one, would it be possible for us to get a better idea of what we're saying yes or no to? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. We'll have our director address that after the hearing. Are there any more participants in this hearing? Seeing done, I'll close the hearing, and Drew, I'll turn that over to you. Yeah, so there was a question asked about the expenditure, and can you help clarify for the speaker, please?
Absolutely. We have estimated costs that we'd be glad to share with the board and the public on what we anticipate. These are primarily conceptual developments and preliminary designs is what we would be going out for. We'd be glad to share that with the board and the public. Each of these expenditures will have to come back to the board in individual awards, which will have the exact dollar amount associated with this as well.
Okay. So it's estimated, then, that it will be over?
We currently have budget numbers for them that we've identified, but the exact numbers will be brought back before the board for approval to enter into contract with those various consulting firms.
Okay. I know that here on the agenda book, we have the, each of the projects listed, maybe in the future, it might be helpful to have that number that we have indicated as an estimate just so it can be a little bit more clear. Commissioner, yes?
Thank you.
Yes, good morning. Drew, also, some of these are specific on the twenty-two SPOS list for the amounts. Like, I know Canton Road is a bucket for improvements all along Canton Road corridor, and I think we have three and a half million or four million in that whole bucket. Barnes Mill Road sidewalk and Peach Hall Road sidewalk are also in a bucket, but they do have costs estimated associated with those.
That's correct. There's the overall cost for that component project, but that also includes construction and utilities and right-of-way acquisition. This public hearing is just for the engineering design services.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Commissioners, before we move to consent, we have a non-agenda item to address, which is the settlement of Sharon de Armand versus Officer Robles, Lieutenant Dance, and Lieutenant Ramirez. And it should be detailed on a green sheet that you have, and I see some of you have it in front of you. But that, Commissioners, I move that we add this item to consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero, Commissioners. With this meeting, there have been agenda items scrolling on the screen, at least to the top of this meeting, and it will follow the meeting. Those items are the actions that we are voting on as part of this consent agenda.
Chairwoman, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the agenda, we have public comment before we move to?
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm just pass right over to the non-agenda, so why don't we go ahead and do public comment and vote on consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The first speaker is Christine Rosman.
Bill, how many speakers do we have? Okay, thank you.
Good morning again. Christine Rosman, Marietta, Georgia, speaking on behalf of myself. I am kind of tired this morning, because, like many people, stunned as to what the FBI did to Donald Trump yesterday with taking over Mar-a-Lago. And I guess I dressed up patriotically, because although it's feeling like that we are in a banana republic, we aren't yet, because thank God we have that constitution, not only our U.S. Constitution, but our Georgia Constitution. And we get to realize that we, the people, have a voice, a very big voice. And as things like this happen, and it starts getting the attention of a lot of people of what the heck is going on to our county, our country, also a little exhausted, because I went to the Board of Elections meeting yesterday, and stunned, I guess I shouldn't even be stunned. I think we're all getting kind of desensitized, because we come here and we speak, and we say, okay, here's the logic, here's the reasoning, here are the numbers, this is why we don't want to do something, and we think we're being heard, and we're not, because the Commissioners or the Board of Elections is going to do whatever they want anyway, regardless of what we have to say. That's disenfranchising the voter and the persons and the constituents. You all are in a public servant role, but I don't feel like it is the public that you are serving, because it doesn't seem like you're listening to the public, because your actions speak so loudly, we can't hear what you're saying. When we keep coming up doing that, we ask, we're feeling like pesky peasants. When you talk about how much money you want, how much more taxpayer money, and oh, you're being so frugal and everything, really? So, you know, I understand you're forty percent low on staff, you're looking to get more staff. So why is it that we're not, that the citizens are paying for a freaking empty parking lot so that you can have your private employee parking that's, what, thirty percent full? So that you can have people walk, and we don't get it till five o'clock, and then when you do, and it's like you have to call for help for somebody to switch over the system? There is a movie out, and a lot of people have seen it, and now it's starting to, I think, resonate with people, that two thousand mules of what has happened to our country and our counties, because we don't really know who was voted and who was not voted in. I mean, you can look at the numbers at ten thirty on November third, and that's like a totally different look of what, not only, you know, for presidential, but other elections. So we don't really know, so if we're, the people that are put in, that they're listening to a different agenda than the citizens, but there are more of us that love this country, that have studied a little bit of history, even if, like, you didn't get much in grade school and high school, which I didn't, or it wasn't on my radar screen, but we're repeating history right now in a very, very sad, sad, sad way, because it's looking every day with more equity and inclusion. It's a carbon copy of other countries that have come down, and how does it happen? It happens at the county level, because the national level, D.C., is going to do what they're going to do, and it's up to us to let you know that we're not happy with what it is, but you will be hearing more, and we're peaceful, peaceful. We're just asking for our rights. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Austin Childs.
Good morning. It's a pleasure finally meet y'all after many emails and phone calls. Squeaky wheel gets the grease. So I'm coming.
For the record, just restate your name.
I'm Austin Childs.
Thank you.
Marietta. So I'm coming out to talk about the ordinance in relation to how many cars you can have on a property, and the fact that it's by the size of the house. For every three hundred and ninety square feet, you can have a car. It's not standard practice within government. Personally, I've called a hundred and fifty-nine of the hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia, the code enforcements, and not one of them has an ordinance like this. It disproportionately affects lower-income and multi-generational households, which there are more of than ever. Over fifty percent of young adults live with their families, live with their parents, and by taking away somebody's car, you're taking away their livelihood, you're taking away their way to get to work. We don't live in New York, we don't live in Chicago, we don't have public transportation that we can get, you know. Personally, I live right off Canton Road, right off Piedmont. There's not a Cobb link that comes to me. I have to go over a mile, walk over a mile to get to it, if that. So we're taking away the ability for people to get to work. We're taking away the ability of people to earn a livelihood, to try to be independent in times of mass inflation, rising housing costs, and it's really, you know, like, my fight personally, I'm just a guy that loves cars. And, but once I saw how the law was implemented, it, somebody has to go up to bat for this, because it's really, it's affecting people who don't have the means or know-how to do it. And, you know, I was researching how this law came about, when this particular three hundred and ninety square feet, you know, in the single-family dwelling definition, when it was added. And it was added in two thousand and six, right after approximately a hundred thousand people were permanently displaced from Katrina in two thousand and five. And of those, so Cobb County, I'm just going by Cobb County schools, Cobb County schools estimates of about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred kids enrolled that year, and FEMA estimates that the average home size of people dislocated is about two point five. So we're looking at over three thousand people just with kids that were displaced into other family members' homes, they were without homes, and this law was brought up and put into place to displace the already displaced. And it's, like I said, it's really affecting people that need it, that need the work, that need to be able to have their cars. And, you know, I implore every one of y'all to really look at it, think about it, because it's not a public safety issue, it is not an aesthetics issue, which is what the law is being used for now. It's, we need to change it for the good of the county, because it's not made, laws are meant to be changed, they're not meant to be based on opinions. They need a foundation in fact. And when laws are, you know, based on a, you know, quick shot, emotional, nothing ever good comes from it. So, you know, just look into it, because, I mean, personally, I'm getting citations at this point, and my boss knows if she doesn't hear from me for a couple days, that I'm probably in jail. So I just want every one of y'all to look into it, and if it's, you know, a problem of the, like, Airbnbs and stuff like that, like, you know, temporary use housing, make an ordinance that specifically applies to those. Don't punish the ninety-nine percent for the one percent. I thank you guys for hearing from me, and I look forward to hearing from y'all, and y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Monica Delancey.
This is Delphine West. First, I would like to thank the Cobb Sheriff Department, Sheriff Craig Owens, and Cobb County Police Department Chief Van Hooser for participating in the Riverside Community National Night Out Against Crime Kickball Tournament. We were able to do it on July twenty-eighth, because we knew the first week of school was going to be very busy, but it was a great event, playing kickball, as well as we had the Cobb Library out, giving out books and face paint. I didn't know they was going to do the face paint, that was a special treat, and there were also some other giveaways as well. But that was a very nice event, considering the fact that the Riverside community has been hit with a number of violent crimes this past summer. So I want to thank Cobb County Police Department, Cobb County Sheriff Department. Also, I want to thank them as well for hosting the community town hall meeting. Thank you for attending, Commissioner Sheffield and Chairwoman Cupid. The town hall meeting that was hosted by the Cobb County Police Department was very much needed to bring the community aware that they do recognize the issues, they do recognize the challenges, but this to keep the community update about the crime. Yes, schools are open. Schools for Cobb County School District opened on August the first, as well as kids were able to, you know, return back to school with new book bags provided by the many different organizations that hosted back-to-school events. I hope I don't leave anybody out, but we know we have Carolyn Turner who hosted the back-to-school event, Austell Community Task Force, also addition Palace Springs Task Force, and, you know, it's so nice that the kids can return to school with new book bags and school supplies. But it's unfortunate that on last Wednesday, the third day of school, August the third, that I got a call from this young lady that was evicted from her home in Cobb County. On the third day of school, her items were placed out, and her kids' new school clothes wrapped up in sheets, and apartment accomplice knew that the rental assistance was on the way. It wasn't like she was in process of applying for assistance, the assistance was on the way, but still, they felt that they had to put this lady out with her two young children, aged five and seven, and the dog, Keen, out in the hot sun. And I know, you know, we say, well, the hands are tied, our hands are tied, but it got to be something that could be done, so that, you know, I know they talk about public safety and safety, school shootings, but let me tell you something, we're going to lose a hundred kids per each school district because of the housing crisis, and they're never going to recover from that. These babies are going to be scarred for the rest of their lives. I know we have resources, yes, she'll get the rental assistance, but just knowing the fact, not only did we have to find a place, and thank you to Mus Ministries for helping with that, but not only we had to find a place for her, but a lot of hotels didn't take dogs, and when I had to, we had to tell her kids that the dog might not have been able to go with them, they started crying, and we were able to make that work, so I said, we'll pay the estrophe for your dog, because Mus Ministries couldn't cover that. But the dog is like therapy for families, it's like their little brother, so we couldn't let that dog be separated from them. But we just want to make sure that we remember, you know, yes, I was a candidate for state representative, but I just want to make sure that I close that. But I just want to make sure that I close out, close it out. I just want to make sure that we know as long as we have children, we have women with children being evicted from homes, low-performance schools, the need of food banks, eviction courts with wall-to-wall belike women being evicted, begging for a place to live, low-wage-paying jobs, senior citizens foregoing meals to pay for medicine, people dying at the hand of gun violence, lack of opportunity for everyone, every person to become a homeowner, a business owner, the work continues. Like I said, every year, one school loses 100 kids due to homelessness because of lack of resources. Who would never reach being a productive citizen. If election is lost because of lack of science, I'm grateful that I put my science resource in the right place. When I see a sign, I think of a child being bullied. When I see a sign, I think of a child waiting in line at the food pantry line. When I see a sign, I think of a child suffering from mental illness. When I see a sign, I think of a child wishing for a safe place to call home. As long as we have these issues, there will never be a victory party. These babies can't eat science. If we are serious about our future, it's time for us to recognize that elections are what it is. The commitment, dedication it would take to save our children goes beyond Election Day. I'm grateful that I'm given the strength to still be standing and continue helping these families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill, I believe that concludes public comments. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Delphine, thank you for coming today. And I know we've had a chance to connect last week and certainly feel for you and your family for having experienced that right when school started. And I'm grateful that Monica was able to step in to assist your family and that Mus Ministries was able to do that as well. And it is unfortunate with a number of families that are being impacted by a very real housing crisis that is upon our county and our region and nationally. And I know that there has been no shortage of persons on this board and assistants who have been doing their best to help families one-on-one. But this is a crisis, I think, that we are going to have to address beyond just the support for individuals. It needs to be addressed from a policy perspective. And, you know, landlord-tenant law is a state law. And we just have a lot of work to do to address the many factors that feed into this situation. So again, thank you, Monica, for stepping up to help. And we're going to continue to need more people, including more nonprofits who are willing to help fill in the gap until we can try to stop the bleed right now. Okay, getting back to order. We are on our consent agenda. We did add an item to consent. And Pam, I don't know if we had any additional changes to our consent agenda beyond this addition. Okay. With that, Commissioners, I ask that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, thank you. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, I'm pleased that Dr. McMorris is joining us for this next agenda item. I'll turn things over to you.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity for me to ask that you accept the recommendation of the appointment of our new Senior Services Director. It is with pleasure that I recommend to this appointment Mrs. Iwana Bovo Nikolescu as our Senior Services Director. She has extensive experience in the field of human services, including 15 years' experience with an area nonprofit which focuses on social services, where she coordinated and managed many agency programs and operations, as well as writing and managing grants. She has been with the county for a few years as well, since 2016, as our Budget Specialist and Grants Manager before advancing to the Human Services Division in 2019. That particular division includes oversight of our senior transportation program, case management, nutrition, in-home services, veterans programs, RSVP, AmeriCorps for Seniors, volunteer services, and I mentioned before, grants. So it is my pleasure to ask this board to accept the recommendation to appoint Ms. Iwana to our Senior Services Director position. And she is here today along with several of her colleagues. I would like to ask that she come up. But I turn it over to you, Chairwoman Cupid, for the next.
Very good. Commissioners, I ask that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Go ahead and call the questions. The motion passes 5-0.
She would just like to say just a few things, if you don't mind.
We'd love to have you do something.
Good morning, everyone. I just really wanted to ask everybody from Senior Services to join us here for... This is my Senior Services family, so... But I wanted to first say, goodness, I thank God for where I am and for everything that I have. I want to thank my family for supporting me in getting this role. I really want to thank Dr. Gibson and Dr. McMorris for the opportunity to be here. And certainly, Chairwomen and all the Commissioners, thank you for your vote and thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve Senior Services and our community. Thank you to my Senior Services family for being here. You inspire me every single day. I can't wait for all the great things we're going to continue to do together. As some of y'all know, Senior Services is celebrating 50 years this year. So big milestone for Senior Services. And so we've been part of this community for a long, long time, and we still have a lot of great things to do. So with that, I'm going to say thanks to everyone. Thank you.
No, thank you and congratulations, yes. Let's get a couple of people on this side over here. One more. We've got to balance one more person. Congratulations. Thank you. I love that. She said her employees inspire her. Noteworthy. With that, we're going to move on to the Sheriff's Office tab.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, we have one item to authorize the purchase of a 2023 Mobility Trans T-350 High Roof Wheelchair Accessible ADA Compliant Prisoner Transport Van for the Sheriff's Office. Under the 2016 SPOS Program, this will be a replacement for our current transport van that was purchased in 1992. And we're asking that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of a wheelchair-accessible ADA-compliant prison transport van for the Sheriff's Office under the 2016 SPOS Program from Creative Bus Sales Incorporated, leveraging the HGAC BiCooperative Purchasing Program Contract BT-01-21 for an amount not to exceed $124,640.87. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. So moved as presented. Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at our Department of Transportation tab.
Good morning again, Drew Ressler, DOT.
Yes, good morning.
We have five items for your consideration this morning. First item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an update to the Department of Transportation's pre-qualified list of engineering and associated specialty firms available for the procurement of professional services for the 2022-2023 pre-qualification period expiring on May 11th, 2024.
All right, so moved as presented. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a cost-sharing agreement with WCV Point CHLLC in amount not to exceed $171,579.47 for drainage system repairs on Stonewall Drive, Project Number B 2233. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Thompson Enterprises Incorporated in amount not to exceed $250,957.25 for drainage system repairs on Stonewall Drive, Project Number B 2233. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelerate Construction LLC in amount not to exceed $259,000 for drainage system repairs on Wentworth Drive, Project Number D 2841. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number E 10C03 Task Order Number 1 to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with CDM Smith Incorporated in amount not to exceed $369,912 for Cobb Link Transit Center System Analysis and Needs Assessment Study. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at our Support Services tab.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. My item this morning is a joint item with Cobb County Fire. We request the Board of Commissioners approve termination of the purchase and sale agreement dated in May 31st, 2022 between Cobb County and Cumberland Mall LLC and approve a revised agreement for the acquisition of vacant land located at Cumberland Mall in Cobb County, Georgia, and generally identify an Exhibit A of the purchase and sale agreement. This comprised of an area of approximately .92 acres for consideration in the amount of $1,282,406 for Fire Station 29 location, a 2016 SPOS Project X1023. Approve the terms and conditions set forth in the attached agreement for purchase and sale and substantially the form is attached. Authorize payment of associated land acquisition cost. Authorize closing of the purchase of the property substantially as provided in those agreements. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute all necessary documents and take all other action necessary or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing purposes.
All right. Commissioner Richardson.
So very happy this is moving forward, working through this. And Commissioner Gamble reminded me, I said I would bring my hat, but I left it upstairs. So pretend like I'm wearing my unicorn hat.
Yes, ma'am.
Yay. So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the question.
We're all glad to see this moving forward.
All right, call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on this. And next up, we... Okay, we have IS.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners and County Manager. We request the Board of Commissioners rescind an award to Flagship Solutions LLC for the purchase of IBM Power9 Equipment and Services and authorize the purchasing director to purchase IBM Power9 Hardware, Software, and Implementation Services from Cambridge Computer Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $222,893.80. 2016 SPOS Project X0020. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute any necessary documents.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All righty, we are now at our Public Services, excuse me, Public Safety tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. Mike Schut speaking on behalf of the Fire Chief. We have one item this morning. We recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a design bill contract with Spratling &amp; Son in the partnership with Piper O'Brien Architects. Authorize the expenditure of 2022 SPOS funding, Program XB 104, in the amount of $1,700,000 to renovate the existing fire training infrastructure and construct new training buildings and props located at 2109 Valor Drive. Authorize all corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. It's good to see this continue to move forward as it's been a long time coming as well. Commissioners, I make a motion that we approve this agenda item. Oh, this is actually District 1. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Thank you. Second.
Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. Thank you. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Appreciate it. We are now at our second public comment.
There's no other people to sign up for public comment.
Okay, Drew. Thank you, Bill. And before we go on to our Commissioners' public address, I just want to remind everyone that we're going to have exact afterwards. Hang tight. With that, we'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. And first, we'd like to wish happy birthday to Dr. Jitan Gibson, our Director of Public Services. She is not supposed to be here today, so happy birthday, and I hope you get back to vacation. You can learn to play chess at Open Play Chess Nights on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the West Cobb Regional Library, which is located at 1750 Dennis Kemp Lane in Kennesaw. Our August dates are the 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st. New learners can learn to play chess with mini-games that introduce chess two pieces at a time. This program is generously supported by Yvonne White, the owner of Chess Made Fun, and KSU Chess Instructor. Join our many tournament-style chess skills happening this month. This class is free and no registration is required. It's that time of year again. The Cobb Police Athletic League begins this evening in hosting their annual soccer and baseball camps. Each camp will teach correct fundamentals, drill processes, and mental approaches, regardless of age or ability level. For additional information and to register for the soccer camp, you can click on the QR code on display as registration is still open. And congratulations to our Cobb 4Hers Savannah Bryant and Ansley Scheiblauer for placing fourth in performance classes and sixth overall with Team Georgia in the 4H Southern Regional Horse Judging Contest. We are so proud of you and all that you have accomplished. And lastly, I was very lucky last week that my basement did not end like this. I came home to hear running water and ended up having a pipe that had separated in my wall. With that, the Cobb Board of Commissioners today in our consent agenda approved an agenda item to begin a water efficiency incentive program and a water monitoring program participation with Fume Incorporated. I have received my device and it will be installed today. And I look forward to having that alert to not only help any future leaks in my home, but prevent damage in others. For information on this program, you can call 770-419-6200, or you can contact the Water Department at www.cobbwater.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
All right, from the office, let's see what we have going on. Yes, we had the workshop, the Environmental Justice Agreement Workshop, and it was pretty well-attended. We had everyone's ideas spread out on the tables. And obviously, members of residents of District 2 were able to contribute their thoughts and ideas to the overall goal. And also included some ideas around the name, the naming, instead of environmental justice. But this really is about having a broader conversation about things that we can do in order to empower ourselves with information around water, soil and air, and take some proactive steps in improving our environment. So yeah, participants were able to get involved and give their input. We do have a survey that's circulating right now around the district to provide your feedback on some of the different topics. There are about 10 different categories that we're looking at that fall under the scope of this, and appreciate any feedback. And if you do live outside of District Two, you can answer the questions, but we do have a notation for that, and I'll share that with the Commissioners as well. Next, Family Fun Health Fair success. So many, many appreciate staff for helping pull this together. It was a community effort and staff effort, and it was the first of what we're looking forward to having on a recurrent basis, but it was all around information for healthcare and how to gain access and some of the different opportunities that are out there, whether it be economic or health-related, in some cases financial-related resources. And it was at Sewell Mill Library, we just had a great time giving out information around chronic illnesses. We also did the Be The Match, we partnered with Be The Match, so they were present. I swabbed my cheek and that information is now sent away, so if... It was definitely going towards the database and really just appreciate Parks, Library, PD, and hopefully I'm not missing anyone. Definitely Cobb Douglas Public Health as well for being present, and several other vendors in the community. Community updates, Girls Who Code. So, join the world's largest pipeline of future female engineers and help close the gender gap in technology. Girls Who Code is an amazing program for girls 6th to 12th grade that focus on teaching them lifelong skills in coding. The program will launch on August 27th at 1:00 PM. Registration is required and can be found at the QR code. It's a great program. And a beginner's guide to reading poetry. Poetry is a personal experience for both the poet and the reader. There's always more to learn from a familiar poem, just when you believe you've gathered everything from its meaning, it can strike you with new insights. Where does one even begin? Join Adult Services Library and Melissa White as participants discuss how to select and read poetry for enlightenment and enjoyment. A Beginner's Guide to Reading Poetry will take place on August 16th at 5:00 PM at Sewell Mill Library. Use the QR code or visit the county website to register. That concludes all of my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl, thank you.
The Cobb County Animal Shelter has extended its Christmas in July special, and we appreciate everyone's patience during the closure the past couple weeks. They are now open. You can go to cobbcounty.org/pets to see what pets are available, but through August 25th, any dog over 25 pounds and any cat or kitten is only $25. So take home your new best friend. Yesterday, I was honored to be part of a presentation from the Marietta Board of Water and Lights. They donated $50,000 to the Cobb Veterans Memorial to be built, and we accepted a check from Mayor Tomlin, Michael Wilson on the board, Donna Rowe, myself and Margie Medlin were present to accept, and we appreciate their contribution and are looking forward to the memorial being done. Thank you. There's also a benefit coming up for the memorial in Acworth. Concerts and cocktails on August 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Cowan Historic Mill in Acworth. Their tickets are available, sponsorship levels are listed, and you can go to cobveteransmemorial.com for more information. We'd love to see you there. Cobb County Police are hosting the Community in Faith Forum. During COVID, we kind of had to stop these, our forums and community engagement. So this one will be held on Thursday, August 25th at 6:30 PM at the Public Safety Training Academy at the East West Connector in Austell. So we're asking all pastors, ministers, rabbis, everyone to come out and engage with our police. Thank you. Cobb 911 for Kids Expo will be Saturday, August 27th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the 911 Operations Center at 140 North Marietta Parkway. You can tour the 911 center, and it's free for kids, and there'll be activities for the kids as well. Next Tuesday, August 16th, is Harry Cone Day in Cobb County. Harry is celebrating his 102nd birthday. He is a World War II Marine veteran, and he's just a great, great person to know. Lot of history in that man, and we just wish him a happy 102nd birthday. And also a happy 50th birthday to Cobb Senior Services. I know the Tim DeLee's Senior Center is having their celebration tomorrow, and it's probably sold out, but Sandy's nodding, yes it is. But we wish them all the best and congratulations on your new director and your 50th anniversary. And my contact information if you need me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield.
County and community collaboration struck again this past Saturday in Austell at the Clarkdale Park Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. The new park has two playground zones, an arts and crafts pavilion, a community garden and a designated area for a new community center. The Clarkdale residents were elated that they can rebuild from the devastation of the fires some years ago. Hot dogs, hamburgers, ice cream, Cat Cracker Jacks and a family-friendly movie had all the makings of a successful community event. A special thanks to our parks team and our parks appointees and our elected officials for stopping by to help to make the day memorable. Congratulations to Major Robert Fisher on his retirement. Major Fisher has served the county for 33 years with the Cobb County Police Department. He was the precinct two commander from 2019 until his retirement on July 26th, 2022, and he has been a true community partner in the South Cobb community. We wish him well in his new chapter as he coached at Osborne High School. He will be missed. Our seniors were in full swing at the Freeman Pool Senior Center last week. We toured the facility and the members were either engaged in an exercise class, bridge games or arts and crafts. I was surprised to learn of the many activities offered at the center, including a billiard club. To learn more about the center, please visit cobbcounty.org and select Senior Services. I had the privilege to meet with the Excel Alumni Group last week for a chat with the Commissioner over coffee and cookies. It was an opportunity for the group to ask questions regarding my thoughts on being elected official, I won't share what those thoughts were, balancing the many responsibilities of being a county commissioner and my goals for the county as well as for my district. It was a pleasure to spend time with the group and connect on a more personable level. Join me as I host Mabelton Cityhood Community Meeting on Wednesday, August 17th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Public Safety Police Training Center located at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. The Mabelton Improvement Coalition and the Austell Community Task Force will moderate the forum. Participants will include the Cobb County Department of Directors, Department Directors from DOT, Parks, Economic Development, Code Enforcement, the County and the County's Chief Financial Officer and the Mabelton City stakeholders. The forum is an opportunity for you to have your questions answered and to voice your support or opposition to cityhood. Cobb County in partnership with the City of Powder Springs and the City of Austell and the Atlanta Regional Commission is completing a study to examine the possibility of a trail that will connect the City of Powder Springs and Austell from the existing trailhead on Silver Comet Linear Park in Powder Springs to Joe Jerkins Boulevard in downtown Austell. Austell residents and future users of the Austell Powder Springs Trail are invited to a community meeting scheduled for August 18th at 6:30 PM at the Threat Mill Complex located at 5,000 Austell Powder Springs Road in Austell. The trail will be transformational for the community. Your input is vital to the success of the study, and we hope to see you there. And while I do not have a slide for the Career Fair, our second annual Career Fair and Tenant Forum was successful with at least one confirmed person that was hired for full-time employment. Yes. Thank you to our employer partners. We had at least 30 partners there to include Wellstar, the Atlanta Braves, the Tax Commissioner Police Department. We also had Cobb Legal Aid in attendance. We had our nonprofit partners, Mus Ministries, et cetera, the Marietta Housing Authority. Also, we had HUD in attendance. Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy was also in attendance to discuss evictions and tenants' rights. His staff was also in attendance to assist tenants with answering their evictions, and of course, those services were offered free of charge. So it was a huge success. Thank you, Deidra, for all of the work that you put into the success of the event, and we look forward to it continuing to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for being responsive to put that event on to not only address employment, but also housing, which we've heard from many residents about. As I've stated before, public comment, Commissioners, yesterday at the conclusion of our agenda work session, we had an executive session that we determined that we needed additional time for due to time constraints that would prohibit all agenda items from being discussed. By general consensus of the board, it was decided that we would reconvene after this meeting today. So before we close this meeting, I will put forward a motion for us to reconvene our executive session, and we'll ask that we come together at about 10:20 to give everybody time to transition over. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we can reconvene our executive session to continue the original executive session meeting agenda from yesterday, Monday, August 8th, in the third floor, BLC Conference Room. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Okay, the motion carries 5-0, and again, I look forward to seeing you all at 10:20. With that, our BLC Commissioners' meeting is concluded.